This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6, that's it. Notice of which was sent to the record and the Star Ledger and was posted on the Bowls Board.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Yeah.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Yeah.
Mayor LaBrus?
Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance and stood to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with never ending end and ever so strong.
Okay. Do have a proclamation to read. As any of you know, it's Earth Week and Earth Day we celebrate. It's also Arbor Day in Hackensack, and this Friday we will be celebrating Arbor Day at the Bergen Academies at 2:00, planting a tree over there, which we do every year. We plant a tree somewhere within the city. And the proclamation reads, whereas Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in the state of Nebraska, and whereas the city of Hackensack has for the 26th year been recognized as Tree City USA for its tree planting efforts, and whereas Arbor Day will be observed on Friday, April 27, 2018, with the planting of a tree at the Bergen County Academies, and whereas such tree shall be dedicated as the Bergen County Academy's tree in honor of the hard-working students of Bergen County Academies. Now therefore, I, John P. LaBrus Jr., Mayor of the city of Hackensack, with other members of the city council, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 27, 2018, as Arbor Day, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees, parks, woodlands, and urban forests here in the city of Hackensack. So, that'll be a good day. I recommend everybody come out and be part of that program. It's a nice little ceremony. And with that, I need a motion to the approval of the minutes, for the regular and Cal minutes for March 26, 2018.
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Good evening, Mayor and council, and invited guest. The city manager's report will be read next. I think I'm gonna have Jim Magan do the budget review for 2018.
It's all you, Jim.
Okay. The budget was introduced at the, was it March 26 or March 27? Anyway, the second meeting in March. And it called for the public hearing for tonight. Now typically, after the public hearing, the budget would either be amended or adopted, assuming that we've received state approval. We're still waiting on our state approval. The state is really backlogged because they changed the financial reporting system this year. So what we'll be doing is having the public hearing on the budget tonight as advertised, okay, but we won't be taking any action, okay? And then at the next council meeting, at the May 8 council meeting, we will either adopt the budget or amend the budget, depending on what the approval from the state is. Okay? So at this point, what you should do is open the public hearing.
Okay. So I need a motion to open to the public just for the hearing on the budget?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Anybody who'd like to come forward and speak on the budget, and the budget only, now is your time to do so. Please give your name and address to clerk, please, and you will have...
Hi, good evening, Kathleen Sauer. I'm confused. How can we make any kind of comments if we don't have the budget? What are we commenting on?
Well, the budget presentation was given at the last meeting, and the copies of the budget are available on the website.
Oh. All right. So there's nothing, you're not getting anything?
It's been introduced already.
It's been introduced, and it's on the website, and...
Budget was introduced on March 26.
But we're gonna, he didn't remember the date, and we're gonna remember what the budget said?
No, he couldn't remember. It was all by the day, it was March 26.
All right. So, we can't ask questions because we have nothing to comment on if we have nothing in front of us, or...
Well, you can get a copy of the budget off the website.
Is that a little bit after the fact? I mean, you're here now to make comments.
Yeah, but it's been available for a month.
Yeah. It was a month ago that we did the budget.
Okay. So you're not gonna get any comments because nobody knows what's going on.
Well, if people were here or went and got the budget, they would...
Kathy, wanna copy the budget?
Well, it's a little bit after the fact.
It's not, I disagree. It's not after the fact, because if we delayed it another month, people could say, "Well, I didn't see it yet either." And then you would delay it another month, and somebody would say, "I didn't see it either." You have to have, we have, there's dates and times. We have to have this in mind.
Thank you.
Seeing no one from the public, I need a motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Oh, sorry.
Under the wire.
Yeah, a little bit. Okay. Linda Flynn, do I give you my name? Is that right? No?
Yes.
Yes. Linda Flynn, address?
Yes.
482 Summit Avenue, Hackensack, New Jersey.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good evening, council. I'm here tonight as the president of the Board of Trustees for the Johnson Public Library. And as you know, in order to maintain current program levels, which have been beautiful, meet the demands of the health care costs, and the increases in a variety of fixed costs, the Board of Trustees had requested the council to increase our appropriation by $230,000 for, over what we had got for 2017. Yet the council saw fit to reduce our budget by $70,000. As a result, the board now has to make changes for this year's budget for 2018 with a shortfall It might not be intentional, but the board can only interpret this decision as in the reduction of the initial appropriation as placing a low priority on the public library services and the events that enhance the quality of life for our diverse community. For example, this year alone, 100,000 people were brought down into Main Street, into the main area because of library events and programming. But in the spirit of having an open and transparent communication with the council, the board is planning on taking four steps to resolve this significant budget shortfall for this year. Clearly, though, budget cuts have consequences. But here's number one. The library will reduce services, programs, and access to materials. Number two, funds allocated to medical insurance will be reduced. However, should health care costs exceed the funds allotted for it, the board may not be able to reimburse the city during this current budget year. The city has assured us that it will work with us should such a situation arise. Three, additional appropriation from reserve accounts will be utilized. While this will be possible in the current year, it will be done with the understanding that continued reductions in reserves is not good fiscal policy because it may leave us unable to meet unexpected emergencies. Finally, after deciding on the specific details of these four steps outlined, the board plans to communicate to the community at large to inform them of these specific changes that will be taking place and affect their access to library services. We have some serious concerns for the future of the library and the reductions of valuable services it provides to the citizens that should, and that would happen if Hackensack continues to reduce the appropriations in the future. Thank you.
You can answer.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Maybe I can recap a few things. The city of Hackensack has numerous departments, and we have a budget that we have to maintain. And the city can only increase that budget by 2%. So, I have basically become the father of a very large family, and all of them have needs. And what was explained to Sharon and members of the library board that were present during this thing, one, the mayor and council have no involvement in this decision. This is not a personal thing, this is not a professional thing, this is an economics lesson. I have a master's degree in education management. I am not anti-library under any circumstances. However, because we need new garbage trucks, fire trucks, a jet vac, the laundry list of needs for other departments is very, very large. The city of Hackensack, in its past, has basically overridden the third of the mill, which is 33 cents on every dollar, that the library receives for almost $1 million. So when I look at the budget and try to figure out how I'm gonna pay for all these demands, the library, single-handedly, is the one department that got 2%, and in one sense, more. So, if anybody would like to come up and try to debate the fact that the library is not one of our key components, and the city has not fully funded this, for years, it has. Unfortunately, in this current climate and this financial issues, the city of Hackensack has to tighten its belts. And the offer, what came up is, "We'll just get that money from the redevelopment and all these pilots." Well, I explained that whole process, that that's gonna take some time. The funding sources that are going to come to the city's coffers will be available in the future, but by this minute, I have to stay within budget. So Jim and I have spent an extended period of time trying to figure this out, not to mention the state changed the budget process and how we file, which confused us and has now prolonged this budget from being approved. But, you know, I know that there's concerns from the library because candidly, this cut has never come in the past, and unfortunately or fortunately, depending how you look at it, the library's been enabled to allow to regain these funds. I'll let Jim comment in a minute if he's got more to add, but at the end of the day, they're not a personal thing. This is just, I have to make this budget work, and there is no more "up," I refer to it as "carb out." So, for me to give you more, I have to cut that from some other department. So at the end of the day, not personal, it's just, it's in economics, and I'm just trying to find a way to make all this pay. Jim, maybe you can fill in some of the things.
Yeah, if I could. Because the city manager and I met with the library director, the Board of Trustees, vice president, and then the treasurer. And one of the things that we explained to them was that the decision to make the cut to the library budget was done after a careful consideration of the library's finances. Your reserves are substantial, and I can say from the meeting that we had, I don't believe that the library board is fully aware of exactly how substantial your reserves are, because some of the questions that I got from that meeting, you know, this led me to believe that maybe you feel like some parts of your reserves aren't under your control when they really are. The decision on curtailing services is the library board's decision, okay? We have no control over that. But one of the things Ted and I stressed at that meeting was that, what we said was that what you need to do is, in our opinion, is you need to do more fundraising on your own, and you need to do exactly what Ted's describing that we've done on the city side, and that's taken steps to try and curtail costs without reducing services at all, as much as we can. You know, and I offered a couple of ways, you know, that I said I could help, you know, along those. The thing with the health benefits, you know, we've talked about that in the past.
Yeah, so we're hoping that that's gonna all come together, right?
Right. But the bottom line, you know, is that I, just my opinion, I don't believe that the library has to cut any kind of services at all, you know, based on the reserves that you have.
Well, that's what we're going to be going over in detail in the future. My job was to come before you today to express our concerns, to let the community know that something was going down and that there may be, you know, consequences of these budgets. Our reserves, you know, we need to have, we have an old building, we have staff, we have these costs that are really fixed that we have no control over as well. So we're open to the possibility and the likelihood that we'll have to take a dip into our reserves. But what we're trying to make you, with you, is that it'll only last a certain amount of time, and then we're gonna find ourselves in a real fiscal situation. So we just wanna know that we're working, we're not, we feel a little neglected, we feel a little bit sad. We work on a very tight budget, and we're hoping that things will turn around and that we will be one of the priorities in the future, especially when the city is looking to redevelop and go forward and get residents. Libraries like schools are one of the things that, you know, people buying homes would look into and wanna know that their children and their family will have that in their neighborhood. So it's just, just like a heads up, just to talk.
Jim, can you tell me how much more there is reserved for the library? How much more is there?
Well, I can't, I don't have the, I don't have the library audit with me, because I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Right. But you have access to that, because I don't have.
Oh, yeah. And we reviewed it extensively at the meeting. I just don't have the numbers in front of me.
Right, okay.
I don't wanna hold you to the dime, but approximately...
Well, there's various, there's all different kinds of reserves, you know? And that's why I said when Ted and I met with the trustees, we went over each one of them in the audit, you know?
You consider that the library is in good shape?
Oh, the library's in excellent shape.
Thank you.
And we suspect, you know, this won't be the breaking year, but we're anticipating that if this trend continues, we don't wanna be left out in the cold, and we want assistance. We wanna be able to continue, because we have really done a lot of changes and moved forward with anticipation that the community is doing that, and we are their little jewel, and we wanna stay in step and have more, whatever else we can do, to make our services free and easy for the Hackensack residents.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Tony, did you wanna speak something? My colleague has joined me.
Very, very quickly. I assure you, we are very well aware of what our reserves are. I think the bottom line for me, you know, and I've been, you know, we're volunteers. We serve on this board and spend a good deal of time trying to provide for this city the best possible library. I think what, and I've had the good fortune of being on this board almost 40 years, first as an ex-official, and now for five terms at four different mayors. I can tell you that we, and Councilwoman Von Rudenberg and the mayor himself has sat on our board, and we know that we're committed to trying to provide a good library for this city. I think what, in this particular case, what has hurt is that not much so much that you did not be able to provide the funds that we asked for, but that you had to cut us below 2017 by $70,000. That is personal, and that is the piece that's gonna probably cause us to cut some program and some services. Because, remember that we're also now, and I realize, we have some reserves. Some of it is very limited to what we can use. For example, donations are given by people, but it's for purposes, and we can only use it for those purposes. We also are now in an effort to renovate the library. We have, because of a, incidentally, I may point out that the amount of money that you're providing for 2018 is equal to what we received in 2011. We had one bump in 2014, which allowed us to create a capital budget. And so for a bunch of things that are capital, we will not be coming to the council. But if we start to use up all our reserve for these purposes, we're not gonna, we're gonna not be able to do the things that we need to do in that council. So I'm asking the officials and the council to at least look at the possibility of restoring that $70,000. That would go a long way in helping us move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak on the budget? Motion to close to the public, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. I would like to say this about the budget, and this is direct to our council liaison, Stephanie Von Rudenberg. I think there's room to work together on certain projects in the library. I noticed it while I was there, but, for instance, our cultural arts center is now open. I think there's a lot of things that happened in the library that actually should be shifted down to the cultural arts center, entertainment-type things, open mic, some of that stuff. Might, you know, I don't know what the cost of these programs are, it might not even worth to move it. But if it is, if they do become costly and we're paying people to do it, we might wanna move some of those things and make them a city cost versus a library cost. Library can still, you know, get credit for it. That's what that building down there is for, to be used by the city, including the library. So that is one possibility. And there's other ways to work together. There's shared services in that library, I'm sure that the city, we might be able to do something else.
Mayor, can I ask you something?
Sure.
For instance, if the library got a problem, for instance, with the boiler, or the roof, or the air conditioner, who paid for it? Who happened to pay for it?
Well, it depends. I know we paid for air conditioning years ago. What was that? That was before we were even in.
We were able to pay for the roof and a couple things.
Yeah, so in other words...
They paid for their own roof.
So any emergency, the city helped you?
I'm sorry?
They helped them with air conditioning back in, I think, 2010 or something.
So in case of an emergency, the city helped you?
No, if you had, if you had an emergency, the city would always, would step in. That's not an issue. It's just dealing with the everyday running of the library is the issue here, and we feel there's ways. But one of the things I have to say, you know, it's very hard for us to tell our employees in the city that they have to stay, because we have this 2% cap, and nobody, very rarely, gets more than 2% during this cap thing. And, you know, the library has gone over that 2% cap, so that's one of the things you might wanna sit and discuss as well. So, you know, and again, I don't know the cost of these raises or what the impact on the budget would be, but, you know, every little bit helps if we can take pieces from here and there and try to put this together and work together. But that's something for Stephanie to work on and crunching numbers and, you know, maybe you can enlist the help of Mrs. Canestrino with her financial background.
And if I may add too, I know we talked about this, Linda, years back, I mean, like establishing a Friends of the Library. I mean, there's so many of these organizations where you can do fundraising, but you can also have volunteer work. I mean, if you look to some of the other libraries as models, so much of this is happening, and it's very, it's a very effective way of bringing revenue or bringing resources into the library. And, you know, we've talked about this, but we really haven't seen it happen. And I think things like that would really go a long way too, to help maybe bridge some of these budget gaps. Because, you know, we are, we are really, you know, I mean, Jim, salary and wages was actually down this year from last year amongst the city employees. So, you know, we really are asking a lot of our employees to get through this process here and to help us limp along until we do see some of the fruits of the redevelopment effort. So, we're asking you to try and be patient too, and certainly not meant in any way to detract from the library that we have and appreciate so much. Trying maybe, Stephanie, get out of the box with some, help them think out of the box with some of this stuff.
And I think that we have started in the discussions about getting the, you know, the fundraising going and setting up different things, and I know that we've touched upon that and trying to think of different ideas and brainstorming with the community of ways to come up with different events and fundraising events to try to raise money. So I know, you know, we had the Friends of the Library and the Paver Project, and we were trying to, you know, expand that and really get that out there. And I mentioned that at another council meeting to try to, you know, start getting that momentum going. So that's gonna be a focus from here on out.
I'll give you an example, you know, the cultural arts center itself, we did a major fundraiser for that, some of you might have been there, it was a gala. And then that one night, besides all the other fundraising we did, they raised about $250,000 in one night. And that would be nice to be able to throw into the kitty. So, you know, the thought of a gala, Johnson Library Gala, I think would be a great idea. But there's ways to raise money, and I, you know, I think that might help as well. But just wanted to get that out there. All right? Now it's your manager's report.
Thank you. This is the city manager's report for April 24, 2018. Pothole repair report. Our DPW to date has utilized 94.25 tons of asphalt for pothole patching. In April alone, the city has patched approximately 321-plus potholes and nearly all of Orchard Street. Now, I have to admit, we have many miles to cover, and the city of Hackensack is gonna rain tomorrow, has a outside contractor that's going to help us, that commercially does paving, that's gonna help take on the big sections of repair for pothole repairs. But, you know, we've had an absolutely miserable winter because of the frost and heaving, but we're doing the best we can. But you can continue to look at the city website. So we got that telephone number correct this time, because I reported the wrong number. But it's correct now, so, or you can contact the DPW, and we will certainly address the potholes that are reported. Number two, city will be hosting the Slam Dunk the Trunk, the Junk, sorry, on April 28 from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Atlantic Street Park at 102 State Street. This will help clean up our city parks and the areas in need of cleanup. For more information, please call, please hit hackensack.org for our website, and they'll present all of the issues. Number three, the city will be hosting a shred event on June 16 from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the Sears parking lot. I've been told this is a traditional service that the city offers, so might be time to clean up and clean out. I should follow that advice. Number four, Arbor Day celebration is scheduled for Friday, April 27 at 2:00 p.m., Bergen County Academy's 200 Hackensack Ave. Myself, I believe the mayor, members of the council will be in attendance for that. Our building department update, 96 notices written, 62 inspections made, four summonses issued, seven CCOs done. Number six, the city's preparing a kickoff of the Paint the Town Pink Community-Wide Effort. This was done last year to bring awareness for breast cancer awareness. You may see many pink ribbons and signage throughout City Hall complex and city property. This will run the month of May. Number seven, flooding issues to report. Stanley Place was not as bad as High Clay, Barry, James, and Burdan. All side streets between First and the railroad were flooded in the center of the roadway with our last rainstorm. Part of the central ave was included in the flooding report. The DPW did have the drains addressed prior to the rainstorm. We are still working on some issues, and we find that some of the roads, the way they're crowned, they're not crowned to the shoulders, they're crowned to the middle. So, we don't have drains in the middle of the street, so that water basically overflows. We also are addressing some other issues, because apparently some approvals were made for people to run and tie storm drains from commercial property into our storm drains, and when that was done, I'm sure decades ago, it overwhelms the drainage. So, we're trying to sort all this out, and I have some engineering work to perform before we can give a full report. Number eight, the city is proud to announce that we are the recipients of the 2018 Bergen County Historic Preservation Award. Our city planner, Fran Reiner, recommended this for the city of, and also was awarded for the H-PAC, and that's because of the restoration of the Masonic Lodge at our new H-PAC Center, which obviously has really become a real jewel for the city in appearance, and now it seems to grow in usage daily. So, I do not have anything further unless there's questions, and that would complete the city manager's report.
When are they gonna start? The company that's gonna assist?
Thursday. It's supposed to rain tomorrow, they start Thursday.
Okay. Well needed. Anyone else in the council have any questions? None? Okay. Ready, Deb?
I'm ready.
Resolution 159-18.
Okay. This is the final adoption for ordinance number 41-2017, a bond ordinance, amending bond ordinance number 13-2016, finally adopted by the city council of the city of Hackensack and the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey on April 4, 2016, to increase the appropriation therein for items or expenses listed in and permitted under NJSA 40A:2-20 by an amount equal to $500,000. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law, and the public hearing was held on December 18, 2017. We need a motion to remove the ordinance from the table.
Okay. Need a motion to remove this ordinance from the table, please?
Offer.
Seconded by Mr. Pataglia. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Now, we need a motion to postpone the vote.
Yeah, I mean, it's my understanding the council does not wanna proceed forward with the adoption of this, so it was...
We're just gonna vote no.
So, it was my suggestion, in lieu of voting no on an ordinance, because you're, you don't wanna proceed forward, you could adopt a motion to postpone indefinitely, you know, it won't remain on the table, and it'll just essentially be in limbo unless and until you ever were to decide to do that. If you're comfortable and you just prefer to vote no, you could do that, but...
We could always reinstated as an ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, you could always do that. I just, you know, suggested if you're voting no procedurally, there's another way to do it.
Pursue it later on, we'll approach it. All right? So, yes?
If you want, we just chime in. This is an ordinance amendment, so in effect, we probably won't take this up again in the future. What would happen is the ordinance as it was written will stand, you know? So this won't be reconsidered, just so you know, okay? So what, if that's a consideration... So what, if that's a consideration, this ordinance will, this ordinance amendment will not be reconsidered in the future.
It would state for us to just vote no.
Yep.
Yes, okay. Okay, so then we would need a motion, I'm sorry, we need a vote to adopt.
Okay, I need a motion to adopt this ordinance, 41-2017.
Offer. Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Nay.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Nay.
Mayor LaBrus?
Nay.
So, resolution 159-18, which is for the final adoption of ordinance number 41-2017, which was a bond ordinance, amending bond ordinance number 13-2016, has been voted down.
Okay.
I'm not used to saying that.
I was going to say, right?
That was like a little weird.
Doesn't happen too often. Resolution 160-18.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 15-2018, an ordinance adopting 77 River Street redevelopment plan consisting of block 203 lots 4, 5, 6, 7, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Okay. Need a motion open to the public, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia? Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward.
Yes, Kathleen Salvo, 47 River Street, Hackensack. This is a course from the Heritage Dyna and it's going to be redeveloped. And I ask redeveloped into what? Is there a plan?
Yes, this is, Kathleen, this is where the old TV bank...
I know where it is. It's a course from Heritage.
Okay, yes, the proposal for that is, we've talked about this many times, is for a rock climbing facility.
Oh, not another apartment, no, I don't really have to hear because that's one of those apartments. Oh, great, okay.
And it will actually be, it would actually meet Olympic standards for this.
Oh, very nice, okay, good, thank you.
It would also be used for parties and events and for just every day.
Wow, I'm impressed, thank you.
Okay, anyone else from the public? Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Now you need a motion to adopt.
Need a motion to adopt the ordinance, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 15-2008 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 161-18.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 16-2018, an ordinance authorizing a 15-year tax exemption for a market-rate rental apartment project to be constructed by 22 West Camden Street Urban Renewal LLC, an urban renewal entity pursuant to the long-term tax exemption law, NJSA 40A:20-1, ed. Sec. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for public hearing.
Need a motion to open the public, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward?
Are we ever going to put a mortuary on rentals? I mean, we haven't rented what you built so far and the infrastructure can't accommodate it. I mean, how many more of these projects are you going to allow to happen? It's like, it's really a burden on the infrastructure of the city. And another apartment, I mean, these are more people. You're bringing in more people and more sewer problems and more...
Well, you just mentioned a key word. We're moving forward with the sewer separation for Main Street. And the thing that allows that to happen is these projects. It's all part of the plan.
I know, that's John, that's only one section. The rest of the section...
We've already completed phase one. We're in phase two. We're just working on the funding and the 0% loan, I think we're getting on that, plus some loan forgiveness. And we'll be installing the pipes through Main Street as part of the, before the two-way conversion even happens.
Right, and before you pave, before you pave the road because that has to accommodate it.
The pipes will be down there. There'll be hookup areas that will have to be dug up.
And it's going to accommodate this whole area?
That's the whole plan.
Okay, and the rest of the city that needs to be revamped is not, all right?
There'll be some adjustments, but, you know.
But this will not be impacting those areas.
I've got a lot of people coming in here. Okay, and you have to increase the police department? We're missing five police officers. We have more people coming in and less services. Well, I'll adjust that later, but that's a concern. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only? Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Need a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 16-2018 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Introduction, or resolution 162-18.
A resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 17-2018, a capital ordinance of the City of Hackensack and the County of Bergen, New Jersey, authorizing an ordinance for the acquisition of a police in-car video system and appropriating $250,000 and providing that such sums, so appropriated, will be raised from the Capital Improvement Fund of the General Capital Fund of the City of Hackensack.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 17-2018 is introduced, now pass on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on May 8th, 2018, at 8 o'clock p.m. or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Okay, thank you. Before we move forward, Ted, did you just want to talk about that on that, about the $250,000 and how we'll be regrouping that money?
Sure. In the prior session of the COW meeting, it was discussed that the city of Hackensack is going to use forfeiture funds that were approved by the Bergen County Prosecutor to put in-car cameras. And so basically to make this work, we have to lay out the money first and then we will basically, in a sense, reimburse ourselves. Hackensack Police Department currently does not have body cameras and does not have car cameras. Police activities, virtually almost 85 to 90%, all those activities arise out of motor vehicle or certainly the officers are using motor vehicles to patrol. So the decision was made because the body cameras are only used when the officer gets out of the car. It doesn't control or record the event of the reason for the stop or the actions taken. And obviously these in-car cameras, you know, they've made cops rich from the TV show because they've been showing this for decades. So the good thing about this event is that the funds for these cameras came from illicit acts of people that were arrested because this is forfeiture funds. So it didn't come out of the city coffers and it didn't come from the taxpayers.
Thank you. Resolution 163-18.
Resolution 163-18 is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 18-2018, an ordinance amending Chapter 114 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, nuisances to enumerate additional nuisances.
Okay, need a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 18-2018 is introduced, is now pass on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on May 8th, 2018, at 8 o'clock p.m. or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Okay, thank you. Resolution 164-18.
This is a resolution authorizing emergency temporary appropriation prior to the adoption of the budget per NJSA 40A:4-20.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jim, we have to not vote on the next one? That's authorizing the budget?
Yeah, the next one is going to be pulled.
So we're just going to pull it?
Yeah.
So we're, do we have to vote to pull it?
No.
So, resolution 165-18 will be pulled. There'll be no vote on that this evening. Resolution 166.
The emergency one we just did, yeah.
We did, yeah, we did vote it, right?
It's just the authorizing the adoption of the budget.
Yeah, everybody voted yes. It was introduced by Deputy Mayor Canestrino and seconded by Councilmember Pataglia. Okay?
So we're going to jump to 166-18 then?
Is a resolution authorizing the dedication by rider outside employment of police officers.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 167-18.
A resolution authorizing a ward of contract for engineering services, the DPW vapor tank excavation and closure support to Arcadis U.S. Inc.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Oh, okay.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Leo?
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Okay, 168-18, please.
A resolution authorizing tax refunds for duplicate payments.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 169-18, payment of bills.
Need a motion?
Need a motion?
Offer. I'm sorry, two seconds?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have a conflict of any type with the resolutions listed within the consent agenda? Nobody? Okay, seeing none, move forward to consent agenda.
The following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by certification of availability of funds. Any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda and the consent agenda items will be reflected in full in minutes, including any exceptions and/or additions. The consent agenda consists of resolution 171, I'm sorry, 170-18 through 175-18. 170-18 is a resolution authorizing the designation of Lisa Marie Shilly as recycling coordinator and authorizing submission of the recycling tonnage grant application. Resolution 171-18, the resolution authorizing a leave of absence for two months for Sam S. Manella Jr., Maintenance Repair. Resolution 172-18 is a resolution authorizing raffle license for Holy Trinity Roman Catholic Church Carnival. Resolution 173-18 is a resolution authorizing the release of escrow for the project known as 111 Cedar Avenue in the amount of $1,376.25. Resolution 174-18 is a resolution authorizing the release of escrow for the project known as 321 Summit Avenue in the amount of $970. And resolution 175-18 is a resolution amending resolution 439-17, authorizing the City of Hackensack to enter into grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, Green Acres Program for the project titled Green Acres Project Number 0223-17-28.
Okay, need a motion to adopt the resolutions as, or pass the resolutions as they were read in the consent agenda?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's it for the document. Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Anybody from the public who would like to speak, please come forward. Give your name and address to the clerk. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Larry Arson, 39th Avenue Hill Drive. It was unclear to me whether the $250,000 for the cameras will cover all the police cars in town?
It will cover all marked patrol cars for patrol purpose. It won't cover administration or detective cars or something like that.
Okay, but all the ones that are out doing real police work are covered?
The marked cars.
The marked cars.
Okay, secondly, I have read resolution 166-18, the title several times, and I have absolutely no idea what this means. Hold on.
Ted want to explain it or do you want? This is the outside employment, police officers?
Dedication by rider outside employment.
Yeah, I'll explain it. What a dedication by rider is, it means that in our budget, okay, we're going to take money that comes in and we're going to dedicate it for a specific purpose. Now, in this case, their police officers work outside jobs, you know, it happens in every municipality. And what has been happening in Hackensack, it's something that we had to fix, is that the money was paid out of the budget. The officers were paid out of the budget. And then the money came in and it reimbursed the budget.
Right.
That's backwards, okay? It's supposed to be the other way around. The money's supposed to come in first and then the money gets dedicated to paying the officers. And in order to do that, we need to set up a outside police officer trust fund. And the dedication by rider is the, us requesting the state for permission to set up that trust fund. But, yeah, you're right, it's really confusing.
Your explanation makes entirely good sense. The title of this resolution is uninterpretable.
It's essentially an escrow account for police officers.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Rich Serbo, Hackensack, 46 Spring Valley Ave. Now, I always welcome the public, but now viewers have told me that the camera moves away from me when I welcome them to the public meeting and make sure they know that this is censored here. We only have three minutes. So the cameras moved, and I just want to know, was that your order, John, to move the camera away from me when I welcomed the public here? So that's the one question for you. And if it is, it's kind of, I don't know, it's, you know, are you telling him what to do? And if you are, I want to know, okay? And secondly, he's given to your campaign anyway. He gave you $1,000 in the last campaign. So what's going on between you two is what I want to know. That's first. Okay, second, there's strawberries, there's blueberries, there's blackberries, but there's no liberry, okay? It's library, okay? So please, let's, you know, let's be on the up when it comes to talking about the library or the education. And it's kind of in character that it seems that they've been cut, their funds have been cut, but you're giving away tax breaks in this town like it's a carnival, okay? So isn't that something to question also? And I'd like to know why you would even think about cutting the library when everybody else is getting tax breaks. And to clarify that whole system, someone told me, oh, I don't understand it. And I beg to differ because the property taxes are being paid on those properties, okay? Until the building is complete, then the pilot program begins and the clock starts then on the 30 years or the 25 years or the 15 years, correct? Am I correct? Anybody going to nod their head?
I don't want to touch your three minutes, so I just...
Okay, you don't want to touch my three minutes, okay, okay. Also, potholes, with this pothole phone number, why is it our job to report potholes? I mean, can't someone ride around and find out about the bad roads themselves? I mean, I mean, we're supposed to help you with your job, correct? Do you want us to ride around, find the potholes and then call you, correct?
We're asking for your cooperation. If you choose to do so, you're obviously not obligated, but we're just trying to facilitate and work as one community.
Okay, it's just, it's, it's, you know, it's almost...
I got to respond to that, but I'm going to wait until your three minutes are done.
Yeah, okay, so you wait to be responded, also, the... Also, all these, you know, these hype and hoopla about this...what's the cleanup day? Is that...when is that? Soon? Next week? That's also your job. So why hype everyone up to help out? Why? I...
All right. Thank you, Mr. Servo.
Okay, so don't forget, John, the video camera...
I got your questions already here.
Okay.
There was discussion between myself and the city attorney and others, and yes, because you are supposed to, and I refer to the...
Yeah, Mr. Servo, there are rules to follow when addressing the council, and there are consequences when you don't follow the rules.
Right.
And so, you know...
And so, one of the consequences is taking the camera off.
And so, you have been repeatedly directed that when you address this body, you address this body. You do not turn around and address anybody else.
Okay, is that a written rule, or is that...
It is in our city code. That is correct. Every person who is here is here to address the council.
Okay, so where is that in the city code?
I believe it's in Chapter 37 of the city code.
Maybe?
Mr. Servo, Mr. Servo, your time is up. He's explaining for me...
He's explaining it to me.
Doesn't matter, you're not allowed to go...
Mr. Sims?
Mr. Servo, we're not going back and forth.
And, and sir... All right, stop talking. We're done. Done, thank you. Why can't you discuss something with me?
We're done. Thank you, because your three minutes is up. Thank you. Next on the list was the library. So if you care the list...I'm sorry, so I just have to finish his list, but I just don't want back and forth from the podium. The library in this city is one of the...over what state requires us to give to the library, which every library in the state is required to be paid for a certain amount by the city? It's dictated by the state, if I'm not wrong, correct?
Turn of a mill.
I believe the City of Hackensack is one of the top five in the state, or going above and beyond, upwards of $1 million over what we're supposed to give them, okay? And we've been more than happy to try to keep that up there as much as possible. But, you know, you cannot...you know, the comment came up, basically, it was, and it wasn't a threat, but it was, we had an issue here years ago, where there was an issue with the library budget, and it filled this room. Well, I don't think the library would appreciate it from a department if people were getting laid off so we could make the library budget what they want, $300,000 more. Well, I don't think they'd appreciate us sending 50 people down there to stand out in front of the library with signs saying, "I don't have a job," or "I got a pay cut because of the library." So that's not where we want to go with this. We want to work with the library. We want to make sure it's fully funded, which it is, by requirement by the state. We pay, I think, $900,000 above?
At least.
Not...at least $900,000 or above what we're even supposed to give them. So Hackensack's library is well-funded, believe me, well-funded, and it has tremendous programs, and they do a tremendous job. But there comes a time when we're in a process like we're going through now as part of the rebuilding, where everybody has to tighten their belts. Tax breaks.
Because you're giving away tax.
Because tax breaks, exactly. The only way that library's gonna be able to stay functional as long as, and the rest of the city, is if we start bringing in this revenue from these pilots, all right? Now, you brought up, you only pay, they only pay for the land until the building's built. That's on anything, Mr. Servo. If you build a new house tomorrow, you knock down a house, right, on a vacant piece of property, you're only gonna pay taxes on that property until you get a CO to live in that house. That's just the way it is. That's on houses, any residential, any commercial property. Potholes? At the risk of sounding rude, your comment made no sense to me. It's our job, sure, it's our job to fill the potholes, but we ask for assistance from the residents. If there was a fire in your next-door neighbor's house, would you wait for a fireman to notice the fire, or would you call it in?
No.
Well, why would you call it in? It's their fireman's job to put the fire out. I mean, that's the reasoning. That makes absolutely no sense to me. We're asking the people to help us fill potholes because it's good for the city. As a good citizen, it's something you should do. Cleanup days, is it our job to clean the city? Yes. These people come in, these are civic groups that come in, they're all 501(c)(3), every one of them gets a $500 check through grant money furnished through different programs to come in, Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, different civic organizations. So it's a joint effort, and it's good community service to come in, and it teaches these young people how important it is to clean up our...keep our parks clean. And they see what happens, where people, you know, just throw trash around. So it's a good learning experience for our youth and the adults as well. So that's what that program's more about than just cleaning it up. I mean, but it's a huge help to the city as well, because it does clean it up. And the video? We discussed that, and I'm not even gonna talk about it anymore. Next, please.
Hello, my name's Jermaine Frye. I know it's been a long time since you've seen me, I'm gonna make this short.
127 Hudson Street, Hackensack, New Jersey.
You got your problem, what you got? I like that, I like that. Are they gonna put cameras in front of the cars on the police cars?
Yes.
Because you got a real bad police...you got a connection. See, I work, I work with a lot of people, rich, poor, middle-class, everything, and I served. My number is 201-679-5453 for anybody that need a volunteer. I work, Mary DeBlasio, I got a friend over there, she does New York, and I do this over here. But your problem is DPW working with dirty cops, and the main problem is Kurt Brown. Because my cousin, who I stay with on 127 Hudson Street, it's an old man, he 81 years old. Now, he's a drug addict, and he got other guys supplying drugs, bringing in Hudson. Don't know why, everybody's complaining about them, Puerto Ricans and everything on Hudson Street's complaining about this man. I got a woman right now, she's disabled, Italian woman staying in the building, she's calling me constantly, these people scared. Now, he done had his girlfriend lie on me in front of the judge. Judge Denise knows it's a game, wasting taxpayer money. You subpoena my cousin, 81 years old, he came to court already. Now, the judge don't want to see this man. Now, you finna subpoena my other friend that's a cancer patient? Well, that's what they...so that's what they doing with the taxpayer money. They got these guys...he's in a form. Mr. Sims, will you please, y'all talk to Kurt Brown? Kurt Brown gone too far, too far. I know rich people all over these boroughs in this country, I know poor people, in the homeless people. I deal with...I don't play politics. They wanted me, they told me when I was in ninth grade to meet George W. H. Bush and run for politics. And I don't play politics, I play reality. That's why my friend Fatima Papapage, she does the fame, she do the...you know, all that. I do my stuff behind the door, I do my stuff on the street, that's why I'm the street preacher. Talk to Kurt Brown and Sims, y'all talk to him, he's in a form, and I know he's in a form. He still...I got him on camera right now. I can't even walk down the street with this guy following me, and people know this. Now, it's gotta stop, because I done emailed his address and where he at to all my people around the country. This guy stop with these police officers. They, NYPD, they don't like us, Hackensack. I can't go over there and show my ID to a...they tell me, take that back over there, we don't mess with Hackensack. They say we got the dirtiest cops in the country. It gotta stop, it really do. It's bad. But if anybody, I don't know, I forgot to see the lady for the libber, you need a volunteer, anybody? My number, 201-679-5453, I do everything for free. I do it from the heart. They gotta stick together in this country, 'cause see, it ain't gonna be no new world order. It's the NWL here, new world leader right here, and I'm gonna build this whole world. It's gotta stop. Everybody going against each other, talking about money, and it ain't about no money. Money ain't power. This is power right here. Pick up a book, keep reading. That's all I gotta say. But tell, talk to Kurt Brown, it ain't no game no more. I'm a truck driver now, I got CBL license. I'm a professional operator, but I'm taking my time, day by day. I'm not gonna sell my soul, or they say, yeah, I ain't gonna bring up little one, I know about all, I'm not gonna do it. I wanna enjoy my money. I wanna get my money day by day, and when I do make a million, I wanna enjoy a long life.
All right, Mr. Jermaine, thank you for your time.
Take care, Jermaine. Yeah.
Never.
Good evening.
Paul Nichols.
How are you?
I'm good, you?
Good, thanks. I went to a good county meeting this morning, and at the Freeholders' meeting, I brought up something that some states are doing, and us being the county seat, it's something that I think we should get involved with, too. It's...first of all, I will say on the record, I am glad Code Blue is over, hopefully, that we're gonna have some nice weather finally. But there's a thing in other states called Code Red. It's, you know, it's like when you call the, you know, when it's 90 degrees for three days, a heat wave, basically, and OEM does the same thing. So I just think that's something that we should...it's been getting hotter, too, during the summers here, you know, even here up north. So, you know, a lot of people on medication, and elderly, and homeless, and, you know, that kind of thing. There should be, you know, they have cooling centers and stuff, so, but I think there should be more for, you know, the vulnerable and stuff like that. So I think that's a good idea. So basically, that's all I was gonna really talk about. There's a lot of new resources. I don't, can't remember now if I thanked you guys for...I had a sit-down with Anthony last fall, winter, about the eviction prevention stuff that they put up there. There's a lot of older Burton County citizens, residents that are elderly, that are coming across problems, you know, with foreclosures and stuff like that. So, you know, I'm sure there's a lot of resources for them, too. So, thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you, Paul.
Next, please.
We have a next facility here, we have the homeless shelter that could accommodate a lot of people with Code Red. That's, should be used more often. Couple of safety issues. I had mentioned when we did this two-way conversion to State Street, and I think it's a great, a great project, that they eliminated two traffic lights, one being on Sussex and one being on Salem, and the mayor said he's aware of it, but I understand there's been a couple of accidents on Sussex. Are we thinking about putting those lights back, or we gonna wait for somebody to get killed before we do that? And what I don't understand, we use the experts, is that we're having more cars, more people, and yet we're eliminating traffic lights. It doesn't make sense. I mean, every traffic light is important, and the really danger zone is crossing the street here on Central, on, to get to the post office. That one light that you eliminated from Salem, you can't cross the street, you have to be, you have to watch at all points, because they're coming two ways, you can't make the left turn, because you're in the way. And they took my, our sign down that we put no turn on red. I don't know why, we had that on Central going, and that never was replaced. So I hope with the conversion with Main Street, which is kind of scary with the two ways, because business is going...parking is everything, and this council doesn't seem to think, hasn't made provisions for parking on a lot of the projects. It's kind of hard to think it's gonna work, because people double park, and they go into the fast food places, they get their food, and then they continue on. When it's two ways, you can't double park. I'm concerned, because we're short like five offices or whatever, and we can't use policemen all the time to patrol the street, and I'm wondering what you're doing about replacing them. Mrs. Canastrino, Amy used to come up all the time and ask for a police director, and the police director did help. I think, I think the police department needs a little more direction, and I think we should think in terms about replacing the police director and replacing the policemen that we lose. We have more people here now and less police officers, and that's pretty scary. And Mr. Edinburgh, since you've been, have a police background, I think you must see this as a problem, and I don't know when you're gonna replace the people that we did. The flooding was atrocious the other day. We flood, and, you know, by building more buildings and bringing more people, that's not helping the situation. And it's not just because the roads are taped the wrong way, there's just no place for the water to go. I passed the airport, it looked like a lake, and I think, Mrs. Canastrino, besides doing the extra people coming to the, to the, to the, more planes coming and noise, I think you should address the flooding, because if they put that hangar up, that's less pervious land, less place for water to go, for water retention, and that's just as important as bringing about the noise, the noise factor is the flooding factor. I'm very concerned about M&M, because where's that water gonna go? You're covering, the only piece of grass that was there, the big lawn, and it's pervious land, the water soaks in, with the building there and no drainage, everything is gonna flood. So, Mr. Simmons, besides costing this $8 million, you better add another $2 million for infrastructure, because it's gonna, it's gonna really compromise the infrastructure in the oldest part of the City of Hackensack. But that didn't seem to matter. All right, my, I guess my bell is ringing. Salt, the salt shed, I see appropriate $300,000 for it. I hope it happens soon, because you did pollute the river the other day with the salt, with the flood and the salt going into the river. Thank you.
Christopher Chambers, 360 Main Street. It's the Y, and I mention that because what I want to talk about, please, is the library. And the Y shares the values with the library of providing a safe and inspiring and protective place for children to learn, as well as myriad services for adults. In my prior career, I traveled extensively throughout the country and in India, and got to know libraries in many parts of the nation, Seattle, Texas, Chicago, Los Angeles. This library is very special. It is profoundly wonderful institution for all of its users, and I want to thank you for all the incredible support you've given and your willingness to work through some budgetary issues. You know, John Adams said, "Facts are stubborn things," and the library is a place of fact and fiction, too. I'm writing fiction at the moment, but I use a lot of facts. And for me, it's an extremely special place, and you've motivated me to investigate ways I can volunteer my time to help. I think also, more so, that as you look at the very harsh fiscal realities that you face, and I understand that, please, as I heard earlier, you know, do not, do not forget this incredible institution that you have obviously invested so much in, and that I have to just say is a tremendous gift to the citizens' current and future of this great city. Thank you.
Thank you. Just want to say, I agree 100%. We have a very, with Mr. Chambers, we have a wonderful library, they do a wonderful And, you know, it was the end of the world several years ago when we had a little budgetary issue with them, but we got through it, and it went smoothly for several years, and then we got a little crunch time again, and we're all gonna tighten our belt, we're gonna get through it, and we're still gonna have the best library in around, as far as I'm concerned. They're not going anywheres, but I think we do need to work together a little more on some of the shared services we can do. I think some of their programming, they're a library, not an entertainment center, I think some of that has to move to the new entertainment center we created in town. That way, we can, we already have funding for that, we can take that over, eliminates them spending money on it, they can put that back into their budget one way, and we definitely look, need some outside funding for them. A friend of the library's have a yearly, one or two yearly fundraisers. Not only do they help financially, but they're good for the community and makes everybody aware just how good of a library it is. So thank you for your time. Yes, ma'am.
Regina DePasquale, Parker Avenue. All right, so as I understand it, only, like, board of ed candidate that you like can address the camera, not the rest of us. So, Rich, they came for us. I started looking into Carver Park concession stand, because somebody told me that Mr. Sims was getting donations of old food on Main Street, from establishments on Main Street in order to use in the concession stand in Carver Park. I want you to know, my focus is solely the food service being run on city property. And I'm sorry, Allison, I've been bombarding you, but I've gotten, been following crumbs and getting information. I found that Hackensack Junior Basketball was established in 2014, after you were elected, and it's not part of the city rec programs. The city basketball program is Hackensack Youth Basketball, it's separate. Hackensack Junior Basketball is a private entity, and Mr. Sims is the principal. And he does not list any association with Hackensack Junior Basketball on his financial disclosure, although he mentioned, has an unnamed cleaning service. But he has told people that he draws a salary from this, this company. Can't look into it, because it, it's not part of the city. It's not a city entity. I looked into concession stand permits. Junior Basketball had seven days a week, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. for three months in 2016 and 2017. There were, however, there were no health certificates for 2016 and 17. But there was an application in 2018, but it's for a renewal, which, how can you renew something that didn't exist? But had the city of Hackensack Health Department do an inspection on a private business being run by a sitting council member? That, if that doesn't, like, set off some flags for you, why didn't you have the county do it? Why didn't you have the county do the ins, why did you put a city employee in that position? That, that was wrong. But now, it was a wrong, wrong type of inspection, because it put him at his, his business as a risk one, which is just reheating food, but that, that means no fish frying, if you're just reheating food, because there are special rules when it comes to fish. Oh, I've done my homework, trust me. And there are notations on the health report that indicate there's grease buildup, which has to be cleaned, which means somebody was frying something there. Need to clean and sanitize the refrigerator. There's no hand soap, and there's unlabeled and undated containers. I would have failed you. Also, a third party was up, but you didn't fail, because the city did the health inspection. That was nice. Also, a third party was operating out of Carver Park during the time that junior basketball had secured permits for the concession stand. Now, there are two types of food license. Yours falls under temporary. I, I want to know what you're going to do about this, because it stinks worse than a fish fry.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, I will submit this to the prosecutor, then. Fine.
I would submit it to the city manager.
No, I, all I get is a thank you. You going to handle it?
If you send it to me, I will certainly respond.
He's running a private business on city property.
Next, please.
And making money.
Chris Coley, Prospect Ave. I want to say, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for putting that light up on Beach Street. It has alleviated.
Chris, we can't hear you.
What do you want me to do? Put it in my mouth? Jesus Christ.
Just, just put your mouth closed, though, that's all.
The only problem we're having is whenever the lifeguard is there. Maybe we can do a film on how to use the hand signs properly, because she's not necessary to be there. I think the people can figure out, unless they don't understand, that red means stop, and white means go, that they should be educated, maybe at the school, and, and maybe put it on the TV show. My other, my other question is, I see Mr. Anderson bought another building that he's going to renovate. He's got four years to renovate that hole on Main Street with those beautiful murals that they wouldn't allow in his town in Harrington Park. There was another one I had. I can't think of it now.
We'll be back here in two weeks.
I'll be back. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Perry Jackson, I live at 167 Central Avenue. Good mayor and council members and.
Yeah, I'm not hearing you.
Yes. I intend to not talk directly into the microphone and talk a little softly. One, I'm glad Mr. Servo invited people who watch online, because that's where I saw it, at the library. And it just encourages people to be a part of what, you know, is, is the city's, you know, movement with progression. The redevelopment with housing, it's an A-plus. The library, with its support, you know, helps people with not only the job search and the research that they can go online and find out things about, with CBS, you know, sharing some of the things on Bank of America, you know, with, you know, Sigma Banks. It, it not only crosses the, the understanding about Sigma-free society, but it also talks about the lending process, which is what is available and what is not available to those institutions that don't have the financial leverage that they could or should have with larger banks that hold a large quantity of the equity. The, the other thing that, you know, I, I think is very helpful is that small businesses in this area needing the improvement. The, you know, you have some offices that 25 Main Street has its office location, and you have other, you know, businesses that have been around for a long time. And myself, trying to regroup, regather, start up again as a company, is taking time, and it's, it's, it's going to take a little more effort, because, one, the carpet has been pulled underneath my feet, no fault but my own. I guess, you know, sometimes it takes regrouping, and regathering, and restarting, however one finds it necessary. The SBA out of Newark, they had given me the opportunity to get a loan before, and I'm also seeking them once again, the score and the SBA, to try and do this once again. If, in fact, the score within Bergen County is not my second option, I at least can turn back to Newark and say, what is the possibility and the prospects for, you know, startup loan once again, with using my own capital, repay it, and, and seeking from Newark the, the leverage possibility as a minority business with Media Mega Force since 1995 to get going again. Sometimes it takes going outside the box, and sometimes work, it means working within your, you know, confinements. But thank you for allowing me these few minutes. And may everyone, I, I grant you the greatest success, and the same to you, Mr. Sims.
Thank you. Have a good night. Seeing no one else in the public wanting to speak, motion to close to the public.
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Stephanie?
Good evening. In regards to library, library.
Did you say library? What's wrong with you?
I corrected myself. I know how important the library is here in Hackensack. It offers many benefits. I have three small children, we go to different events there. I know that the council, the city, the city manager, Jim, we all recognize the benefits. It's difficult, there, there has to be cuts. However, I know with the help of volunteers like Mr. Chambers, I know there hasn't been a huge effort in fundraising at the library. I think that something like that would definitely help. I think we would get the support of the community. And I think that this would be a benefit to everyone involved, to become involved in, in fundraising efforts. And something like that will definitely help bring the community together, and I think will be a good thing, and I think we'll see great progress with that. So, I'm a hundred percent confident that this is just going to be okay. In regards to opening day of baseball, it was a success. It was one of the nicest weekends we've had in a long time. Thank you to Mr. White, the DPW. It was a really rough winter, and they were able to get everything ready and going in time. And thank you to the parents and the coaches and all the volunteers involved. It was a really successful day, and it has been a successful season so far. Mr. Nichols, Code Red, absolutely a great idea, something I'm sure the city will be on board with, as they were with Code Blue. And I know this is late, but in regards to the Easter egg hunt, I forgot to mention at the last council meeting that, you know, the change in how we handled the Easter egg hunt was a great success. A lot of positive feedback, the, the parents and the children are very happy, thanks to the rec department and the DPW for their effort in hosting it, and it should be recognized that it was, turned out to be a good event this year. That's it for me. Have a good night. Thank you for coming out.
Thanks, Steph. Just at a high level, because we did talk a little bit about the budget tonight, again, extend thanks to Jim, our CFO, and Ted, and all the department heads, who worked so diligently to put that together. We were very fortunate, again, this year, to see a tax levy, and a tax levy, that's the amount of money that needs to be raised by taxes to support the city government, come in at a 1.9% increase, which amounted to about $1.7 million. The two driving forces, key driving forces to that $1.7 million increase was a one and a half million dollar increase in our health benefits, and another half million increase in, in pension contributions as dictated by the state. So, with drivers there of $2 million, to still maintain a $1.7 million increase means that everyone, yes, everyone in the city is working together, working together well. They understand the needs of the city, and they're tightening their belts, and, and doing the very best they can to still provide excellent services to our residents. And they're all, every employee is greatly appreciated by this council. A couple of things tonight, as far as redevelopment went. Kathleen Salvo, you asked a question about 77 River. There were two projects on here tonight. One was 77 River, which I think I already explained, you know, we're looking to see a magnificent rock climbing facility coming into the city. And, you know, the structure of the building looks gorgeous from the, the renderings that I've seen. And not only will that, you know, supply entertainment and exercise, et cetera, for our residents, but it will help bring new people into the city as well. So I think that's a wonderful use, that's an odd-shaped property, and it was hard to find something that would be beneficial and worthwhile to put there. So I think that's a great use of that property. And again, 22 West Camden, a small piece, just a flat surface parking lot right now, and we're looking at 60 units that are going to be going in there. And again, I think a really nice, substantial use, and will really clean up that whole corner and that area, and look really nice when it's finished. Ted mentioned that the city has received the 2018 Historic Preservation Award for the Hack Pack, our Performing Arts Center. I mean, another fine, fine accomplishment. Wonderful to see the recognition that the city is getting, you know, throughout the state and throughout the county, for some of the, the things that we are doing and, and accomplishing in our own downtown. So that was great news as well. Tomorrow night is the Teterboro, the Tannic meeting, the quarterly meetings. I attend those for, the city representative for those. Again, if there's anything worthwhile that comes out of it relative to the city, I'll be sure to brief you next time. As always, I ask our residents to please continue to call or email if you see things that are noisy, disturbing, out of the ordinary, low-flying. You know, we need to continue to stay on the radar. You know, they are doing the environmental testing now, we're in that phase with this new alternate flight path. But that doesn't mean that we should remain quiet, because other communities are not. So we need to, you know, continue to, see something, say something. You know, that's the catchphrase of the day. We need to do the same with the aircraft noise. Kathleen, you talked about the flooding issues with this proposed redevelopment down in the airport of hangars and extensions. This topic is up for discussion. The Army Corps of Engineers is seriously evaluating that. You know, I've heard feedback that those initial, you know, reports are not conducive to having this type of development. I don't send support at that, at these meetings for that development. I think it's going to be interesting, but my faith is in the Army Corps of Engineers. I do believe they're being very thorough. I think it's outstanding that, you know, they've stepped up, and they're in there, and they're really doing due diligence. And again, this was, of course, a partner, not, not really a partnership. Remember, this is a private company that just hosts themselves at Teterboro Airport. So this expansion in this hangar, to my understanding, you know, is, is going to be developed by this private company. So it will be interesting to, to follow that development closely, as we will, and as the neighboring towns that are really, really affected by that are very, very much on top of that. So again, progress there in any way, I'll report back to you as well. Thank you, everyone, for coming, and have a nice evening.
Thank you. Dave?
As Stephanie said, baseball had a great opening day last Saturday. The mayor threw a strike for Leo. It was a great day. I want to thank Bill White, and all the volunteers, and the parents and the coaches. Earth Day this Saturday, Slam Dunk the Junk, it starts at 9:00 a.m. Hopefully, you can come out and participate. We got a grant from Green Acres for $600,000 to help with Fishini Park. We appreciate that. Hackensack Junior Basketball, yes, our concession stand, we do sell fish. Baseball, they sell hot dogs. It's not a, it's not a laughing matter or nothing. We both have concession stands that, that do well, and the money goes back into the If you stand for something, you will fall for anything. That's Malcolm Matz. Good night.
Festival, you know, I want to congratulate the three people that they decide to support the kids in the school system, and they're going to give their time as a member of the Board of Education. So, good luck with that to Francis, Carlos, and Lance. And it's no question that, for instance, people like, now Stephanie with the wrestling, John used to do wrestling, David with the basketball, and I used to do with soccer. We give our time for free. We don't get paid for. The only reason is to try, festival, our kids, they are in the program, and to try to get the rest of the kid away from the street. And the city can't spend $5 million to do a facility or whatever. And when the kid got hooked in drugs, no matter how much money you spend, sometimes you don't get that kid back. So you maybe spend another $12,000 on a funeral. So that's what we try to do, keep these kids away from the street. And many kids, they get the benefits, sometimes they go right to the crack. Today, for instance, I was in Paramos, and I was really happy to see a kid that is the son of the guy Walter Cotrell, a kid, a nineteen-year-old, his name is Matthew. He was acting as a coach for my grandsons in Paramos. You know, nineteen-year-old, he's already doing something for the kids in Paramos. And to go and say that, for instance, somebody making money, in the city of Hackensack, like in other cities, the people there together, swimming clubs, baseball, or whatever they do, their own fundraising, they get sponsored, or sometimes they do barbecues or whatever, you have to raise money to put the money back into the kid, because, because sometimes you got family, they can't afford it. So sometimes we get money out of our pockets to try to get for the kids shoes, shares, or whatever. But sometimes the money that you get, you put it together, you have to try to get the thing going to tournaments or whatever. So it's really sad when the people here, they can't, they say that we are buying a car with the money that, that we got in the field. That's not true. Thank you for coming, guys.
All right. What was it, last Monday was the storm?
Yes.
Last Monday, we had a storm that was unbelievable. Three and a half inches of rain in a short amount of time. Certain people think that only Hackensack floods. I know for a fact that high-end homes in New Milford had three feet of water in them, in their basements. River Edge flooded, Lodi flooded, Little Ferry flooded. When you get that kind of rain on a river, like the Hackensack River, you're going to have flooding. It's just the nature of the beast. It's a tidal river, high tides, it, it's going to happen. There's no place, there is no place for the water to go. We live on a river, and when you have that kind of rain, you're going to have flooding. So I want to thank Fran for putting us in for that 2000 Bergen County Historical Preservation Award, and we got it, that was wonderful. I want to invite everybody, again, Friday, 2:00, as we plant a tree at the Bergen Academies. The rock climbing wall was spoken about. Places like this do not come to Hackensack if nothing's happening. That's the point I wanted to make. They're doing this venture because things are happening. They know there's going to be a lot of young people moving into this area, and they're ahead of the curve. And we want projects like this. It's a great project. It's, it's wonderful. It's going to bring attention to the city, and it's going to only enhance Hackensack. So, that, but that doesn't happen without the redevelopment. That's, that's a result, one of the results, and it goes with what I said, build them, and they'll come. Build it, and they'll come. Well, they're coming. But it's a process, and it's going to take time. Tomorrow, I'm lucky enough, I'm going to New Brunswick in the morning. I'm speaking in front of NIOP, which is one of the largest commercial real estate groups in the, in the country. This is the second time I've been asked to speak in front of them about our redevelopment projects going on in Hackensack. Regused of buildings like 210 Main Street, stuff like that, they're very interested in that. Salem and Sussex, I agree, we need to, we actually did get some relief there when we blocked the two, those two spots. I actually got a letter from David Sanzari, who had very big concerns about that, and he said that helped with the problem. Double parking, I agree, could be a problem, because people are used to doing it now. But we're going to have to have some more police. But we do have, as was mentioned tonight by us, our city manager, there's a new type of cop that will be in Hackensack. We used to have an H-cops, there's now going to be what's called a police aide. And those police aides are allowed to do a lot more things than the H-cops are allowed to do. I don't know whether traffic is one of them, or, or stopping people from double parking, but that might be a, you know, something they might be able to do. We talked about water, and with all these new buildings. So a lot of these new buildings, through, through redevelopment, will have large retention tanks underneath their foundations, which nobody had before, which is going to be huge help for, for water, because that water's retained in there. It should help tremendously. We did speak on the library. At a very special day Saturday, I went to, we all call it the Midtown Bridge. We all know what the Midtown Bridge is, but in fact, it's really the Lieutenant William C. Ryan Memorial Bridge. Lieutenant Ryan, joining the United States Marine Corps, a young Lieutenant Ryan, joining the United States Marine Corps, a young married man with a little baby. I think in 1968, he flew over 300 missions in his first year. And in May 11th of 1969, on his last mission, the day before he was going on leave, his plane was shot down over Laos. He left behind a four-month-old son, Michael. It's coincidental that today is Lieutenant Ryan's birthday. So, let's wish you a happy birthday to Lieutenant Ryan. Yes, good thing, Dave. Good thing you reminded me of that. There were a lot of people involved, state officials were there, county, the NOM Knights were there. It was very nice to see the family of Lieutenant Ryan. There must have been about 15 to 20 members still there. The other part that was very touching on this that really wasn't talked about, but I did some research, his remains were found last year, and he was brought home and buried in 2017. So, that was a special moment. And unfortunately, right before, his, his wife actually found, knew that they found his remains, but actually passed before the remains were brought back here. It's, it's an unbelievable story. You can go online and read about it. But he's a hometown hero. He's a state hero. He's a national hero. And, you know, to me, it was more about, yeah, it's a new, the bridge is reopened, and it's going to help us with traffic and everything else. But that's the real story about that bridge, as far as I'm concerned. Couple other things. Opening day, we talked about that. It was great. I was lucky enough to have one, more strike left in that arm. It was wonderful. There's another thing, I don't think I spoke about it last time, but a couple of weeks ago, I went to a little regatta over at Overpack Park. Hackensack has two, two young teenage girls that have started a Hackensack Crew Club through the high school. Now, as you know, crew is an elite type of sport. It's an Ivy League type of sport. Something would probably associate with Hackensack. But now we have a, a two-member crew team in Hackensack. It's, one of them is my next-door neighbor, Kira. Kira is the brother of, the sister of the young boy that Leo was just talking about. She's quite an athlete. They're all, the family are athletes, all good kids. And the other girl is Sophia. And I went to the race. They were racing town from Westfield, and I think it was 2,000 meters. They beat them by two minutes. All right? The next day, they were in Philadelphia. They won their first heat and took third overall in the race in Philadelphia. So, these are serious athletes. So, it's a serious thing. So, we're going to be doing some fundraising for them throughout the community. And tomorrow, Saturday, we have a busy date, not tomorrow, Saturday, there's a lot going on. We have the Slam Dunk the Junk. There's a, an organization rebuilding a house. There's, of course, baseball, all the stuff going on. We're also renaming the street over by Holy Trinity. And I don't know if you know this lady, but I've known her for over 30 years, Sister Emily's Way. All right? Sister Emily has been a fixture in Hackensack for, it's got to be 70, 80 years. She was, actually, I went to her 70th anniversary as, as a nun. All right? And that was probably five, six years ago. So, lovely lady. If you get a chance Saturday morning, 10:30, Holy Trinity. And she's still active. She's still very, she's retired, but she's still active. She's like their ever-ready bunny. And with that, I wish everybody a safe trip home, and thank you for coming.
Motion?
Motion to close the meeting. Roll call? All right, all in favor?
Aye.